We will now call the February 15th, 2021 Common Council Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
And Alderman Guzekowski is absent.
Okay, would everybody please rise for pledge?
Rich, you want to start us off today?
I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we do the minutes, Catherine, would you please read in the notice of video conferencing?
Certainly. The City of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capabilities was duly noticed per the City of Oak Creek Municipal Code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of the options for participation. This meeting may also be viewed on the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in the notice methods. The meeting recording will also be accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. When unmuted, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with comments and questions. Questions and comments may also be entered into the Q&amp;A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. There is one or more public hearings scheduled as part of this meeting. After the mayor announces the public hearing, staff will read the public hearing notice into the record, state that the hearing is open and subject to the meeting procedure, and provide a brief overview of the proposal. The chair will then proceed with the hearing by making calls for public comment. Following the third call for public comment, the chair will close the public hearing and proceed to consideration of the remaining agenda items.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
That will get us to item three, which is approval of the minutes from February 2nd, 2021. So everybody had a chance to review them. If there's any errors, corrections, comments, omissions? If not, motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve the minutes of February 2nd, 2021.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
State.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item four is our public hearing, and it is consideration of the city's intent to exercise its power under Section 3.200 of the Municipal Code of the City of Oak Creek to levy special assessments upon abutting properties for the benefits conferred upon such property along East Rossin Avenue from 890 feet east of South Clement Avenue to South Rolling Metal Court. Catherine, would you please read that into the record?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is the city's intention to exercise its power under Section 3.200 of the Municipal Code of the City of Oak Creek to levy special assessments upon abutting property for benefits conferred upon such property in the following location. Project number 20103, Water Main and Apprentices, all property along East Rossin Avenue listed below. 1610, 1800, and 1828, East Rossin Avenue. From 890 feet east of South Clement Avenue to South Rolling Metal Court. Dated this third day of February 2021.
Thank you, Catherine. And with us tonight is Brian Johnston, Water Department Engineer. Brian?
Good evening. This is a utility project that was driven by the utility to install water main along the north side of East Rossin Avenue to connect up two dead-end water main sections. The intent of this is to improve water quality and fire protection for the area in the northeast part of the city. It's extending 1,385 linear feet of 12-inch water main at an estimated cost of $552,000, and the assessment amounts are $97,000 roughly. I do want to point out that the assessment values for the affected parcels, there are three parcels, the lateral costs on there, the way that our ordinance is written is that it is twice the per linear foot fee for the lateral fees. So those are high numbers for the lateral fees. The assessment will be what the contractor charges for the laterals to actually be installed. So it might be less than what is shown on the preliminary log for assessments. And I have spoken about Severt Trucking. I have not been able to get in contact with the other two residents on the site. We do have two affected residents there. The three parcels only on the north side. The reason it's on the north side is that the south side will have its own water main system if water is needed on the south side. So they were not impacted by this development. Other parcels on the north side are Milwaukee County, the railroad, and We Energies, which will not develop any further land, and they are not benefited from this water main extension. So we'll open up for the public hearing and see if there's any questions.
Great. As our clerk said, this is a public hearing. We will make three calls. If you'd like to speak and you are here in person, please approach the podium, give your name and address. If you'd like to speak virtually, please use the raise hand function, and Kevin will allow you in. This will be our first call. Sir?
My name is Martin Chapa. I'm at 1800 East Rossin. And I think I just talked to Stephen, and I got a better understanding of why. I think that was my first question, and I think Brian has also kind of filled me in as to why. But I think, like Brian said, there's no need for that lateral on the south side. From our perspective, we have excellent well water, and we wouldn't have a need for it on the north side. But I'm not sure what Del Severt's situation is or the adjacent property. Do they have a need for the water lateral? Brian, can you answer that?
Since Mr. Severt's the only one that I have spoken to, he is in favor of it. He does want a lateral installed. I was not able to get in touch with the other resident to your east.
Okay. So for the record, I think that's my position.
Okay, Martin.
And like I mentioned to Stephen also, that the Lake Arterio project extends 794 through across those railroad tracks, and we're the only property that was notified that we're in the path of that potential highway extension. And, you know, in my communications with the DOT, they're telling me that the project has been postponed until 2050. But, you know, it could resurrect next week, it could resurrect 10 years, 20 years. 2050 is a ways out. Now, you know, my concern is, you know, is, does that, are we installing something, proposing to install something that could potentially be reworked with the extension of the highway?
You know, it would be my guess that the DOT is pretty much on target. Now that the post office went in, that extension's going to be rather difficult also. So again, not impossible, and as you said, anything's possible, but I know that extension's not on DOT's radar as of now.
I've got a contact, and I've got a report that says it's tabled for 2050. But yes, 29 years out. It's all about funding.
Exactly. Right now, they're looking at the expansion of I-94 at Miller Park, so all eyes are focused on that for a 2024 start there.
Okay. All right. I mean, my portion of it's $45,000. That's...
Substantial.
Yeah, yeah. Couple of different adjectives for that, too. But, you know, that's why I'm here.
Understand.
It's a big pill to swallow. I get it, you know, water quality.
Yeah.
You know, I'm in construction, you know, and that kind of leads me to my next point. You know, I have relationships in, you know, the utility business. I, you know, I've been building hospitals for 30 years. So, you know, if this does move forward, I am happy to hear, Brian, that the number was just a budget, and you'd give me a heart attack for nothing, you know, and, but, you know, I think, I think a better line of communication in the future would be appreciated. I know we did get this document in the mail a couple weeks ago. But Brian, if I can get your contact information, you know, I think there's more information that I'd like to get about, you know, what's...
Correct. And Brian, you guys pretty much operate standardly by the book. If somebody requests the water main, it pretty much affects the whole line, correct? If one owner does, it affects all owners? Am I correct in that?
Yes. But this project was driven by the utility to take care of the dead-end lines that we have there. So that's what's driving this project. It's driven from the utility's intent to take care of the water quality and fire flow in that area. Mr. Chapa, my information should be on the letter that you received to contact me.
Okay.
If not, I would ask that Catherine, if you could help out and get my contact information, Mr. Chapa, that would be great.
Certainly.
So one last question. Timeline, best-case scenario, worst-case scenario? A potential start?
Potential start is hopefully the spring, late spring, probably May, June. It's going through DNR right now. The railroad actually threw me for a loop and approved the permit very quickly. So we are pushing to have this construction done this year. So we intend to have this wrapped up by Thanksgiving time.
Okay. Is that it, Martin?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, Brian, just from my own education, thank you letting me know that was utility-driven. Also, when it comes to somebody in Mr. Chapa's case, and he has a substantial amount to pay, is that paid over time to the utility, or does he got to cough that all up at once?
No. Based on the acreage and the frontage that they have, both Mr. Chapa and Mr. Severt have 20 years to pay that back. There's a 4% interest on there, but it is over a 20-year period. The other property owner is on a 10-year basis, given the frontage that they have.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. As we are still in a public hearing, we will make the second call. Kevin, is there anybody wishing to speak virtually? Third and final call? Anybody wishing to speak on item four? We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item five, which is consideration of the resolution authorizing that water main improvement and leveling the special assessments on the benefit properties along East Rossin from 890 feet east of Clement Avenue to Rolling Metals Court. So we'll open it up. Steve, you want to start us off?
Brian Alderman Kirkowski. The, for the residents, they're going to be responsible for the water main that runs across the front of their property there, on the frontage, okay? Is that correct?
Yes.
But the Severt, it sounds like Severt Trucking wants to have a lateral going into their place of business for city water? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
But Mr. Chapa indicated that he has fine well water, so is he obligated to pay for a lateral to go from the water main to his house? Or can he opt out of that?
He can opt out on the lateral portion of it. There is still the linear footage that benefits the property by having water available that he would be responsible for.
Okay. All right. I haven't heard, tonight was the first night I heard from a resident, and he was kind enough that we chatted beforehand. I think, I thank you for alleviating his concerns. I was correct in thinking that it was going to be a water quality issue and provide a better fire protection. So I haven't heard anything from Severt Trucking nor the other resident either. But I think you've answered Mr. Chapa's questions, and it's a lot of money, but it's over 20 years. And, yeah, we talked about the 794 extension and the potential for an overpass, and of course, DOT would have to still continue that water main of some sorts, wouldn't they, if they built an overpass on Rossin for a freeway? I mean, they wouldn't create a dead end. They wouldn't create a dead end. They'd have to go underneath or do something, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have water main that runs underneath I-94. It can be adjusted and changed if and when that extension ever happens.
29 years. I probably won't be sitting here at that time, but maybe that freeway might get built someday, so. But like the mayor said, the post office project kind of put a crimp in that plan. So, all right, thank you very much.
Yeah. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Good, Steve, I had recalled some of those things that you had brought up, but they've come up so infrequently, it was kind of, those facts escaped me in terms of payment options and the option about actually securing the lateral. So, Brian, I don't remember exactly, because this has been a while. What is the utility's assessment for linear, per linear foot right now?
For this project being a 12-inch main, it is $93 per linear foot.
Okay, and Mr. Chapa's exposures, how many linear feet?
427 feet.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, I have one more.
Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Brian, who's going to be doing the work? Can you put this out for bids, or is the utility going to do it?
No, this will be out for a public bid. We're hoping in about a month to have DNR approval, and we'll have this out to bid.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no more discussion, questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Kirkowski, make a motion to the council adopt Resolution Number 12227-021521, a final resolution authorizing water main improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties along East Rossin Avenue from 890 feet east of South Clement Avenue to South Rolling Metals Court.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye. So, Chapa, continue to just communicate with staff and, you know, keep, keep a close eye on where it's going for you.
Will do. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Yep.
Item six, talking about facilities tonight, it's consideration of a motion to purchase a new train tracer control system for the DPW in the amount of $86,642. Dick, would you like to join us up here and tell us what you've got going on?
During the CIP meeting that we held this fall, or last fall, I came to you and requested that we upgrade the Tracer Summit system that currently is in our police department and our DPW. They no longer, train no longer supports it like any other computer system. It becomes obsolete. I can't get parts for it anymore. The police department has 17 years on that system, and the DPW has 11. The new system is Tracer Summit, I'm sorry, is Tracer SC. It basically does the same thing, but it's the newest version that they have out. You approved to do the fire station around Rossin, which that was 20 years old when we did that. We just completed that, and everything went quite smooth. So now we have to finish the other two buildings, and then all of our buildings except for Fire Station One, I'm sorry, Fire Station Two will be on this system. And it's the building management system that runs all the HVAC. It's all networked together so that you can see it through cell, through your cell phone, or I can see any of the controls through the, any one of my units on my desk.
Questions for Dick on the system? Nothing? Dick, is this full rooftop units, the whole thing?
No, no, it's not the equipment.
You asked the controls.
It's just the controls.
Ouch.
Oh, yeah.
Fortunately, they did a nice job estimating, but, you know, we went through this at CIP and we were approved for...
Particularly the next one.
Yeah. Big-ticket stuff, so.
Yeah, it is.
I understand. I know, I get, I get the software and the whole thing and the licensing.
It's terrible today.
The licensing, you would just need one for all of it then.
Yes.
I mean, that makes sense, but ouch, because they're already halfway through their useful life anyways on the units.
Well, the controls, though, won't go away.
No.
If you need a rooftop unit.
Yeah.
That unit can be replaced and integrated with the, with the software.
Yeah.
Are you standardizing, Dick? Do you have the screen right now, or?
Yes. This building, now building, Fire Station Three and Fire Station One are all on the new system. So I have DPW and police left.
Maintenance life a little easier?
No. The more technology you have, the more you have to fix.
For all the software works.
The same.
Should be. And licensing.
Well, and if I have a controller that goes out, especially in a, you know, you lose one on a day like today, and now you can't heat the building, it's quite a problem.
Any other questions for Dick on that? No? Okay, seeing none, motion.
Oh, we're over here. Gail will move to approve the purchase of a train tracer SC control system upgrade for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $86,642.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item seven is also facilities, and that is to, consideration to approve the purchase of a train tracer SC control system. This one's for the police station in the amount of $149,462, probably for the exact same reasons Dick gave us on the Department of Public Works. Any questions concerning the police department? Police department's 17 years old, just for reference. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
And DPW was 11 years old? So buildings age fast.
Dick, I do have one question. Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd district. How long do they provide you with technical support on this equipment then, Dick, once we upgrade it?
Technical support, basically, how would I describe it? I know the software.
Okay, so, so we have...
I've been running it for, in here for the last six, almost six years.
Okay.
Believe it or not, this building's almost six years old. And I'm very familiar with it. I have another additional piece of software that allows me to plug right into each controller and each unit to either program or troubleshoot them, and we, that will be able to be used across all of the buildings.
So you're confident you're able to deal with any software?
Yes. And they, any, any additional stuff, I can call or text, and they'll answer it for me. They don't, I don't have a problem with that. I've got a pretty...
The brief conversation I had, experience with this, this system for another community building, and when, you know, it became dated and we didn't work on it, there were significant costs to have their software engineers come in and assist us through that problem. It sounds like that problem's not going to exist.
It's not a problem.
Okay, great. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Rich. Any other questions for Dick on the police station? Seeing none, motion.
Gail will move to approve the purchase of train tracer SC control system upgrade for the Oak Creek Police Station in the amount of $149,462.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Okay. Item eight deals with police and its consideration of a resolution establishing various fees, permits, and charges by the Oak Creek Police Department effective February 16th of 2021. And I see we have Chief Anderson and Dave Stecker with us from PD. So Chief, would you like to start us?
Actually, I'm going to let Captain Stecker start with this one.
Captain Stecker, would you like to start us?
So what we did here was actually, if you guys recall, on December 1st, the meeting, we went through the fee schedule as the entire city, and one of the things that was updated was the Municipal Code, which had not been done in several years. One of the things that was brought up then, and it actually was on our radar at the time, it was brought up by council, that there were a couple fines that were not in line with other ones and why they weren't. So one of the things that we said at that meeting is we were going to go back, look at those items, and make sure that everything in the fee schedule was in line with other things that were similar. So we did go through them exhaustingly here at the police department on several levels with all the lieutenants, and resolved that 32 fines needed to be amended to be in line with similar ones, to make sure that everything was balanced and that we weren't doing anything in an unfair, impartial manner. So the 32 items were updated, and that's what we're looking to go forward with today and get that updated and approved. If you guys have questions on specific ones, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Anybody have questions for Captain Stecker concerning fees? There's quite a list of them. But again, this just brings us up to par, I guess, with surrounding municipalities.
So it should just be the 32 that have the red line through them that were updated.
Thanks. Here, I just want to say thanks for the, for going through this list and correcting some of the inconsistencies that were on it. Thank you, Lieutenant Stecker.
No problem.
All right. Any other questions, comments? If not, motion.
I will move to approve Resolution 12223-021521, establishing various fees, permits, and charges charged by the City of Oak Creek to be effective 2/16/21.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item nine, again, it concerns police and its consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of an Altron OSCR 360 High Resolution Capture Kit in the amount of $11,119.95. Captain Stecker?
I'll start with this one, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Chief, go ahead. I'm 0 for 2 with you guys tonight.
We're trying to take steam a little bit here. This is something that we came forward in the budget process. It was approved through the CIP and then part of our budget. This is, this system is to help us better document and capture our scenes, whether it's a crime scene, an accident scene, or even mapping some of our buildings. And I guess one of the easiest ways to describe this is if you ever go to, even to what realtors use as virtual tours of a, of a house or something, and you get that 360-degree view that you can pan around, that's what this equipment does for us at a crime scene. I was supposed to allow for a much more efficient capturing of those scenes, so we'll be able to better depict where everything is at the time. And I believe it actually came in, when we put out the bid, now came in a couple hundred dollars less than what we actually requested for in the CIP process. So we're just coming forward now to request permission to actually release the funds to purchase it.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Anderson? Is this used by most departments throughout the area, Chief?
I'm not sure about the amount of departments that are using this. This is a bigger step up in technology for us, and even to be able to become proficient in it, we'll be able to use this to even map out some of our own buildings or other areas, other buildings in the city for training purposes that will give us a better layout options for those if we, if we need to do that. So I can't answer the amount of places using it. I believe the technology is being used by, to cover some higher crime scenes from some agencies, but I don't have a number for you.
I'm sure it's beneficial. And then, does IT support it in some way, shape, or form, or is this, does this start on your servers, or is this...
So there is a, there is a support fee that goes with this, and that was originally captured in our, in our regular request. The first year is covered, and then we had worked with IT after that. And Captain Stecker, if I'm misspeaking, jump in, but that, that was already planned when we put the original CIP request in.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Okay. Greg, anything?
Okay.
Seeing none, motion.
Local move that the common council approve the purchase of the Eltron OSCR 360 high resolution capture kit.
Dukenyak, second.
Local.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 10 is the license committee. I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on the common council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? All right, seeing none. Kirkowski will make a motion that the council grant the various license requests as listed on the February 15, 2021 license committee report.
Dukenyak, second.
Local.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item 11 is our vendor summary report for February 9th, 2021. Please take a look and if you have any questions, just feel, feel free to speak up and the appropriate person shall answer. See anything out of the ordinary? Does anybody have any questions, comments? Nope. Seeing none, motion.
Gale moves to approve the February 9, 2020 vendor summary report in the total amount of $837,351. Of this total, $16,833.71 will impact the 2020 fiscal year. The remaining $820,516.30 will impact the 2021 fiscal year.
Local second.
Local.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item 12 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator. President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator.
Local second.
Thank you. Local.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
We will now convene into closed session and we will resume at its conclusion.
Because of the sensitive nature of some of this, the.
I'll shred it.
Shred?
Yeah, if you guys want to just.
I don't feel comfortable leaving that.
Nope, make a pile and I'll put it in our shred.
Thank you.
Definitely.
So we'll leave that up there.
Okay, so we have no motion.
Make effects though.
Yep, I'm good.
Should be light and fluffy then, right? It's got to be. It's got to be cold.
It's in the mid 40s, one, 45, 46.
Guys ready? We will now consider a motion to reconvene into open session.
Gale moves to reconvene in open session.
Local second.
Local.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And we need no action at this time on item 14, so no motion is needed. That gets us to adjournment.
Don't forget the vote tomorrow, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Catherine, would you like to announce anything for voting tomorrow?
Certainly. So we have the spring primary election tomorrow. There's a school-state superintendent contest and also a local school board. Three open positions. Polls will open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. And all polling locations in the city for the six different, six districts will be open.
And we are practicing social distancing and masks, correct?
Yes, we are. We're practicing all full PPE and I'm sure our DPW and other locations are out working tonight to clear the snow.
Great. Thank you very much.